Good afternoon, everyone. It's July 25th, 2024, and this is the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the Town of Chatham, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023, signing the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 560-967-528. Or join the meeting via Microsoft Teams in the link on the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. First, we'll start with a roll call of all board members authorizing this form of meeting. Dave Veitch?
David H. Veitch and I authorize this form of meeting.
David Nixon?
David S. Nixon, I agree.
Virginia Fenwick, I agree.
And we'll just keep going all the way?
Steve DeBoer approves.
Lee Harvey approves.
Paul C. Simple, I approve.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. If any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone, please give your name and the last four digits of your telephone number for identification purposes. The way that meetings are run is that we shut off all cell phones or anything that makes a noise for status, and after that, the hearing notice will be read by our staff. Sarah Clark to my right. You are your representative, will present your appeal, our application. Anyone in favor will have an opportunity to do that, up to five minutes. I'll read all letters that have been received. Anyone against the application can speak for up to five minutes, and if there's any questions, that would be allowed during that time slot as well. The applicant may then rebut any testimony. Members may direct questions to anyone present. We'll hear further information, deliberate, no, we'll ask questions, close the public hearing, then deliberate. We will usually vote on the appeal or application. All votes will be taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. With that, we will get started on, let's see.
We have some minutes. Yes, I'll move to approve the minutes of June 27, 2024, as published.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Before we vote, is there any changes? No, okay, now you can vote yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Yes.
Who was voting last time on that?
I was.
Okay.
I approve.
All right. Paula?
I'll approve also.
Okay, and as do I. So now, we were gonna, we're gonna start at the end of the list because it's a short one, and that is 37 Clamshell Drive. Sarah, whenever you're ready.
Application number 24-077, All Real Estate Trust, care of Donnie Dunham, 42 Wianu Avenue, 1164 Ostraville, Mass. 02655. Owner of property located at 37 Clamshell Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 16A Block 29, Lot H 676. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 22-070 granted on October 27, 2022, which allowed for the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The applicant now seeks to modify the special permit to allow for additional building coverage. The approved building coverage was 860 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 863 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The law is nonconforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 5,674 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Okay, and we have received a letter on July 11, 2024. Please take this email as a request to continue the application for the special permit modification for 37 Clamshell Drive until August 15, 2024. Thank you, Donnie Dunham. So does anybody have any comments on that? Seeing none, how about if we take a vote?
I'll move to grant the request of continuance to August 15, 2024.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny? I vote yes.
All vote yes.
As do I. So voting today, as you just saw, are David Veitch, David Nixon, Virginia Fenwick, Paul Simple, and myself. So now we'll start with the first actual application at 151 Old Harbor Road. We already heard this one, and so we're gonna just discuss where we're at today and probably vote on it. When Sarah's ready, she'll read it.
Application number 24-040, Keith and Wendy Metters, care of Thad Eldridge, 1038 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 151 Old Harbor Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15F Block 1, Lot 60. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing nonconforming accessory structure will remain unchanged. The proposed addition will conform to road and a butter setback requirements. The existing building coverage is 5,300 square feet, 15.9%, and the proposed building coverage will be 5,603 square feet, 16.8%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 33,406 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from May 9, 2024.
Mr. Eldridge, welcome.
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Eldridge, he's southeast, representing the Metters. When we were before you, it was a little premature. We hadn't been to Historic, and we got right up to deliberations. We've been to Historic. They weren't entirely enticed with the, with the proposed addition. They couldn't give a real good feeling on which direction to go in. We have a 90-day demolition delay, and we decided to come in here and review this with you, hear what you have to say, and then decide where to proceed from there.
Okay, so we already finished deliberations?
No, we didn't start deliberations.
Oh, we didn't? Oh, okay. So I'm gonna read the correspondence, just to refresh people's memory. The concept, I mean, I'm sorry. The Historical Commission sent us a letter on July 16. They found the home to be historically significant in June. They thought that the proposed changes did materially diminish the home's historic significance, and they imposed a 90-day demolition delay, and that was on, I'm not sure what date they imposed it on. The commission was hoping that they would, that the applicant would reconfigure the new addition to not have a flat roof and fit in more with the rest of the home. And the demolition delay expires on 9/16/2024. So do you have anything else to add?
No, we're happy to answer any questions. If you'd like me to give a better overview of what we've already reviewed, I'm happy to, but...
Does anybody, just quickly, would you like to see?
Yeah, Thad, if you would respond to their complaint?
So, one of my last conversations with Mark Zebra was regarding this property, and he didn't expect any issue with Historic because we're actually cutting into a nonhistoric wing of a historic structure while keeping the historic portion of that structure intact. There was a concern about the tree, and given the shape of the roof, the tree's gotta go no matter what, as the roof is really suffering from it. Insurance company hasn't been out there yet, but if they were to see it, they would be, they would be on it. So the applicants have asked me to proceed this afternoon to hear your comments, and then we'll either continue, withdraw, or get approved.
What about the flat roof part?
They like the idea of the deck that's out there. That's gonna be the daughter's bedroom up above, and it's a, it's a deck feature that we see all over Chatham.
So the answer's no on that, and leave it?
We'd like to hear from you and your thoughts on it.
Okay, all right. So why don't we do questions from the board? Dave Veitch?
Well, I hadn't studied this closely while I was out there, but I'm looking at the photo, at the Google Maps shot here. So that addition, Thad, you've said is, that's, that's a nonhistoric addition, having been made to the original part of the house. Do we know about when that addition was built?
I do not. I remember researching the original house, but...
Okay, I'm just, I can see a difference in style to a certain degree, so that's the only question I had.
Dave Nixon?
I have no questions, thank you.
Virginia Fenwick?
So, Thad, I did watch the hearing also, and so actually, my question was, given what Historic said, what was your proposal today? So you've already answered that, but they specifically said, "We want you to save the tree and come back and give us a new design," which was what the 90 days was for. And the gentleman, it wasn't you that was presenting to Historic, said, "We will look at that." And he made it sound like the tree, "Yeah, we could clip off the corners," I think that's what he said. So I just wanna reconcile kind of what...
We did start work on, on different footprints, different roof styles. Without Mark, Paul is a little overwhelmed at the moment, so it's, it's a, we decided to come forward to you to hear your comments and then proceed from there.
And you're saying, then, there's like regardless, because they did comment, the craftsman style of the original house, which has been altered over the years, and losing some of that. That was the main objection to the flat roof, was because of, it's not consistent with that style. You're saying, "We wanna keep the flat roof, and we wanna say we're gonna remove the tree regardless of the roof."
If you look at the roof on that, there's signs that that tree has affected that roof.
Well, that, and it's right on the corner of the plan.
And it's right, I mean, it's just off the corner of the building to begin with, and that tree's just gonna get a little bigger. So as it grows, it's only gonna cause more issues for the house.
Okay, thank you.
It's unfortunate that they put an addition out in that direction so close to that tree.
I guess another question I have is, it's, your narrative said, which is always very helpful, thank you for all the detail, said that it was going to be for the, for the primary bedroom to come down to that main floor.
The primary bedroom is on the main floor underneath.
Today?
And that's where it's going to be. This, this addition is for additional space.
Is for the primary bedroom, that's what that space is for.
And then the, the daughter's bedroom is upstairs, and she'll have her own...
So it's four bedrooms today? It's gonna stay four bedrooms? One of them is just coming down to that new space? And part, part of that addition includes a closet, a master closet. I remember Historic saying that, but the whole, the whole thing isn't a closet, the whole, the whole thing is the bedroom and the closet.
The bedroom and the closet.
All right, that, that's all I had.
Steve?
I don't think I have any questions right now.
Lee?
No, no, no questions right now.
And Paul?
Thad, as I understand it, when we look at the front elevation, we're talking about the addition on the right-hand side that's the proposed. Were they suggesting that rather than having that flat roof there, that you should have a roof that matches the existing dwelling?
I believe so. They didn't like the idea of the flat roof, and I don't know if it would emulate any of the roof lines here or the specific porch roof.
Okay, I have no other questions.
So at this point, do you, you don't have to go back to them. They've, they've made their ruling, 90-day demolition, and if we approve it, finding that it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, then you're just off and running after September, that September date.
It means you don't have to put a restriction on start date because the Historic already has.
Yeah, so, okay, so there's nothing legally in our way of just approving this today?
Correct. It's unfortunate that our Historic Commission only has the power to delay and not to do more.
Right, right, okay. So Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations, let's see. Lee?
Thank you. Well, I actually kind of like the addition. I kind of like the flat roof. I think it's kind of nice. I don't like the fact that the tree is gonna be removed. I just think it's a shame. I have a big maple tree in my backyard, too, that I did not remove, and it's, you know, it's a big tree, but I don't know. But I do like the addition. I don't think it is out of character with the house from a historic perspective. I don't think the addition is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I think that lot can handle an addition like that. I just am, it's too bad about the tree.
Okay, we're into trees, if anybody has noticed.
Everybody's into trees this year.
Yeah. Let's see, Ginny?
So I, we're talking a lot about building coverage, and I know that this is a very small ask in building coverage. It's only 303 square feet, and it's a large lot, three quarters of an acre of a lot. So 303 square feet is not a lot in the context of such a large lot. So I do wanna acknowledge that, and it's a very small increase from 1509 to 1608, but they're already so far over. They're 58% over what's, and they have been, I mean, for years and years. So, so the ask is very small, but you know, I just, I'm just throwing it out here during deliberations that it is such a large, already over, but it is a large lot. Is that enough to say that it's substantially more detrimental? Probably not, in my view. And Historic was, I think, 5-2 split, so they were not fully robustly in favor of a change to go back to the craftsman. Had it been a true craftsman style, they said, we would be more adamant about, about it. And I think that might influence, frankly, but, but, but it wasn't. It has been altered, and it has lost some of that. So they were a little bit split, as you mentioned, on that. So, so anyway, those would be my comments.
Thank you. Dave Nixon?
Well, I don't agree with the Historic Commission that it should have a flat roof. I agree with what Lee said. It looks better. It really looks better this way. And if you, if you added another peak to the rein of all this, I mean, oh my goodness, you know, how busy do you wanna get? It just would be unattractive and unfortunate. So as far as I'm concerned, keep it the way you designed it. That's great. As far as the tree goes, and I know there's no such thing as an insurance company that likes a tree, from personal experiences, you understand. And so I can see them wanting to whack that, but I hope your client pushes back and says, "No."
Okay, so you're likely to vote for it? Yeah, okay. Paul?
I agree with David Nixon. I think, I think the property is actually more attractive with the addition done in this manner, as opposed to the historic concept. Everybody wants to keep the tree, and I understand that, but I don't think this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I will vote in favor of it.
I don't mind the flat roof at all. I think there's many other structures in town that have similar roofs and porches like that and small decks. I think it's fine. The tree, you know, sometimes you have to take the good with the bad, so. Tree, I don't mind. If it's, if it's endangering the rest of the house, we had a big storm, we'd have a bigger problem, so I don't have a problem with that. And I think the design is fine.
And Dave Veitch, last but not least.
Yeah, the, I agree with previous, it, I think the design looks better the way it is. The other alternative that I can see, that perhaps the Historical is. The other alternative that I can see, that perhaps the Historic members, certain members of Historic Commission were thinking about, was if you didn't have a flat roof, you could have a fairly low-pitched hipped roof there, and in showing, you know, doors for entry onto a deck, you could shorten that, put windows and fit a roof in there, but it wouldn't look any better, and the applicants would lose the ability to have a nice deck out there. That makes no sense to me, really, and certainly not in terms of our standards of something being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. There's no way that this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And then with respect to the tree, I mean, it was the first things I noticed when I went and looked at it, and you know, there are a number of other trees on the property that are some nice trees, and I think, you know, we've talked about trees with different property owners at different times, and I think, I always try to qualify and say, "Well, I don't, you know, the trees are not really a zoning issue," at least in terms of how I'm reading the bylaw. Now, Randy has a different opinion to a certain degree, but I think that we, I think it's important to walk a balance point with respect to trees, and I wouldn't, and I, and I think that it's, it's a good enough, I think the argument is a good one, that the tree is very close to the building and is not, and it's in the way of this addition, so in a way, I'm sorry to see it go, but I wouldn't stand in the way of that at all. So I, I think it meets our criteria, and the, and so I will support it.
And I agree with everybody else, and as far as the tree being part of our criteria, I just, I just note suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and storm runoff. So I think trees fit into that. I'm not going to try to save this particular tree, so that's number four. I think it's met. The extent of the proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure or use, that's really important, as Virginia Fenwick pointed out, but it's very small, and it's not going to cause me to want to vote against it. That's the third criteria. And then going back to number one, it's certainly an adequate site size, and it's compatible with all the proposed structures. We're in the neighboring properties. Proposed use is certainly compatible. Some of the other criteria don't apply. So on balance, it's an overwhelming yes for me. And what about, what about conditions? Would there be any that...
Well, could I make an offering first?
Sure.
If we take the tree, would it appease the members if we had a large tree planted a little further from the house?
Sure.
We can get something from Johnson's Tree Farm and get a spade out there and plant. It's not going to be the same size, but something that, that's a bit larger than a standard tree that you get from the nursery.
To me, that sounds good. Everybody's nodding.
I would agree, yeah.
Yeah, everybody's happy.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. We don't want the tree to fall on the house. That's not a good look.
The members have not wanted to remove that tree for years, and they've known that it's been a problem, and it's, they're doing this addition partially to push themselves to have to remove the tree.
I saw a tree on Sam Rider Road that fell directly on a roof of a house, maybe two years ago. You probably saw it.
Okay.
And they left it like that for a bit, so it definitely was not a good look. So with that, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted, and do you see any problem with the normal summer conditions?
No. The builder was the one who was at the Historic Commission. He's ready to get started with this. Obviously, it'll be after September 16th, so it'll be wintertime construction, and he should be able to have everything done for spring.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted, with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles should be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only. Is there any need to add any tree provisions? I don't think I see any, so I'll leave it at that.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you much. Have a great afternoon.
All right, now we're going to move along to 27 Shirley Drive, and that is going to be Mr. Litchfield, Stephen and Georgianne De Senzo are the owners, and whenever Sarah's ready, we will take on that one.
Application number 24-074, Stephen and Georgianne De Senzo, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 27 Shirley Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 1B, Block 9, Lot N11. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the partial demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of additions. The remaining portion of the dwelling and proposed additions will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and such substantial alteration, considered a substantial alteration under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,544 square feet, 13.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,675 square feet, 14.2%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and it contains 11,818 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Bill Litchfield, here on behalf of Stephen, Georgianne De Senzo, who I think may be online with us today. We are here in regard to what is a fairly simple project, although I suspect that on your site visits...
We're getting an echo.
Just going to say, I suspect that on your site visits, Mr. Semple, as the resident South Chatham member, may have had an advantage. If any of you took GPS down Glendon Way, you realize that there are some limitations in regard to Glendon Way. And that's really why we're here, because we have a garage that faces Glendon Way and Fairview, which can't be used. Once upon a time, Glendon Way was something you could traverse, as shown there, and as you saw when you went out there. When the garage was built, the garage is, you know, well-capped, it's maintained nicely, but you can't get a car into it without going through all the vegetation, and you'd have to go all the way down Fairview and come back in. So the De Senzos, while they have enjoyed having the garage for storage, they're much more interested in eventual year-round occupancy, retirement, and the future, and they would like to have a larger first-floor bedroom. So they are proposing to remove the unusable garage and essentially trade it for a conforming addition on the right-hand side there or easterly side. The architectural plans by Rod and Wilcox says, as the site plan, are fairly simple. It mirrors the existing house, which is currently a simple cape, and the left side, while a foot higher than the ridge, is also set back, so it's not going to have any impact on the streetscape in a negative way. So I'll go into the criteria. As adequacy of site, we have a lot which is typical for the area. It's adequate for the existing house built under prior zoning, although we do have technically a nonconformity as to Glendon Way. We're too close to that thoroughfare down there. That will go away when the garage goes away. I think you can find the site to be adequate for the additions. The net increase in coverage is just 131 square feet, but that still complies as to compatibility of size. The neighborhood was created under prior zoning. The current house is consistent with, but is the second smallest of the nearby properties. If you approve the special permit, it will remain compatible, whether you rate that by the actual footprint, the percent of coverage, the gross floor area or the living area, and again, what we're seeking to do, completely compliance with the bylaw. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, we have an existing street, sorry, lot size and street nonconformity. There is no increase whatsoever. We're eliminating the street setback issue, and the coverage remains below the limit. It is therefore what we call, as you know, a Bjorkland appeal as to suitability of site. The site has been developed for the residential use for the last 60 years. There are no wetlands at issue. As to scale, sitting mass, views, and vistas, we have a one-and-three-quarter, one-and-three-quarter story full cape, well-suited to its location. If you approve the addition, you can do so based on finding that the scale and mass remain appropriate. The master bedroom addition is set back 33 feet, more or less from the street, meets the sideline requirement, and again, it is a step back from the main house. The kitchen addition in the rear is de minimis. You can't see it anyway, but it'll make for a kitchen without a garage indenting into it, as it does now. There's no significant impact on streetscape, and there aren't any views or issues, views or vistas at issue. The compatibility remains unchanged. It's a residential use. We have a Title V for four bedrooms. The health agent has reviewed and approved. We're not adding any bedrooms. So the issue, as you know, and the question to be decided, is whether the proposed addition of a conforming addition is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current nonconforming structure in a nonconforming lot. The dimensional nonconformity, the non-functional garage, will be eliminated. The De Senzos consulted with their neighbors, who are supportive of the proposal, and I think you can find that the use of the existing garage would be detrimental to the neighborhood. On the other hand, the proposed modest and conforming expansion of the footprint yields a much more livable house, with a larger first-floor bedroom helpful for future use, and again, it can be built completely in compliance with the bylaw. So in light of the criteria and the plans on this property in this location, I think you can find that the proposed additions are not substantially more detrimental. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, counsel. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Seeing none, I have five correspondences to read. On 7/17/2024, we received a note from the health agent of the Town of Chatham, Judith Giorgio. She reviewed the plan to renovate and add two additions to this property and remove the existing garage, as shown on the site plan. The property has four bedrooms, and the proposed addition and plan will maintain the four-bedroom layout. No changes to the septic system are required. I have no concerns. Then we have a note from Barbara Carol Horn and James Horn, and they are at 37 Shirley Drive. Let's see. This is to inform you that Barbara Carol Horn and James Horn, who are located at 37 Shirley Drive, are butters and are in complete support of the additions and renovations that have been requested for application 324-074. Stephen and Georgianne De Senzo, owners of the property at 27 Shirley Drive. If you need any information, feel free to reach out to us. She gives her cell phone number and her email address, and that's that one. Then we have a note from Donna, let's see, let's see. I'll just read it, and her name should come up. As neighbors of Stephen and Georgianne De Senzo, we support the addition to their dwelling at 27 Shirley Drive, Donna and Joseph Orsello. And that came in on July 10th, 2024. Next, we have a note. We are in fully, we are fully supportive of the application made by Stephen and Georgianne De Senzo for their property located at 27 Shirley Drive, and that is from David and Kathleen Steele at 38 Shirley Drive. Next, we have a note from Mary and Rob Hillard, owners of the property at 69 Norcross Circle, South Chatham, and are butters to 27 Shirley Drive and are supportive of the application. Thank you, Rob Hillard. And that was on July 6th, 2024. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that has a question or would like to speak against this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none. Questions from the board. Dave Nixon?
I have no questions, thank you.
Dave Veatch?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
Steve?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
And I have no questions either. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
All vote yes.
As do I. All right, deliberations. Steve?
Well, I think this is a good project. I think, you know, the fact that you're, you are staying within the setbacks and making the house more livable and more usable, I don't, I don't see a problem with this. I think it's a good idea.
Ginny?
I agree. I think it's a thoughtful renovation. I think removing the garage will give them nice backyard space, keeping the four bedrooms, expanding two of them, right? I think it makes a lot of sense, does meet our criteria, and is, in my view, and not substantially more detrimental.
And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues.
Very good. Dave Nixon?
I also agree.
And Dave Veatch?
As do I.
And Paul?
And I agree.
As do I, meets all the criteria that you set forth. We'll adopt that in our findings. And any conditions?
I think it's, well, I haven't, I don't know the construction schedule, but obviously, we wouldn't start anything until after Labor Day, and if there's an issue in the spring, we'll come back to you if need be, but we would expect the, accept these standard conditions, so-called.
Okay, very good. Paul?
All right, I'll move to approve the application with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles will be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
All vote yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. We're going to go to 43 Edgewater Drive in Chatham. Jeffrey Molton Jr. is the applicant and probably the owner, and whenever Sarah's ready, we'll hear that.
Application number 24-075, H. Jeffrey Molton Jr., 43 Edgewater Drive, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 43 Edgewater Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15A1, Block 10, Lot H125. The applicant proposes to change, alter, expand, a nonconforming dwelling and a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed addition will be nonconforming, and it'll be located entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,009 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,040 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains zero square feet of buildable upwind, where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 21,906 square feet of land area, where 40,000 square feet is required in our 40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Molton, welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Potash, members of the board. Thanks for taking the time to hear this petition. Compared to most of what you deal with, I think this is pretty modest, so I won't take up much of your time. The house was built in 1968 by Jack Horn on fill from the Dyke Project, so it probably wouldn't be built today, but nonetheless, it complied with all then-existing zoning regulations. Today, it's nonconforming for the reasons that Sarah said. Project has two main objectives. The first is to add insulation and heat and air conditioning to what is basically a summer cottage, so we can make it livable year-round. And secondly, we're going to reconfigure and update the kitchen and downstairs bedroom and add a powder room, in part to facilitate one-floor living. We're not getting any younger, and in part to take better advantage of the water view that's there. Again, we're here for the permit because of the 31-square-foot cantilever bump-out. That's a change to a pre-existing, nonconforming structure. I think on, on the architectural plans, you can see, both on A3-1 and on A2-1, you can see where that addition is, and I know you've all been there. Before I go through the criteria, I do want to mention that we've recently decided not to add the gas line. There's a gas line at the beginning of Edgewater Drive, and running it down to our house and into the house turns out to be a lot more expensive than anticipated, and our, we've been encouraged, both by our children and the state of Massachusetts, to avoid fossil fuels, so that we're going to stick with just the electric there. And because there's no gas line, there'll be no generator, so no generator pad as well. So again, I addressed the criteria in my written submission. I can go through them briefly now. In terms of the size of the site, it's supported the existing structure since 1968. The 31-square-foot increase in building coverage is pretty minimal. We're still under the, I think we're going from 9.2% to 9.3%. In terms of compatibility, footprint, actually, of the three houses on Edgewater is the smallest current footprint and the biggest lot. We're actually going to be a few feet bigger than one of the other houses if we add 31 square feet, but... square feet, but certainly compatible with the street and with the other dwellings in the neighborhood. Yeah, the proposed increase, the non-conforming nature, is minimal, thirty-one square feet. Suitability of, of the site, again, I think the site's been suitable, it will continue to be. We've been before the Conservation Commission and are scheduled to go back before them August seventh for conditions. The additional coverage is gonna be mitigated by plantings that they approve. Septic system, it's, it's residential neighborhood still. No impact on neighborhood visual character views or vistas. Septic is adequate for the existing and proposed uses. No impact on traffic flow and safety, noise or litter. Utilities are adequate, and the last two criteria are not applicable to this. As I understand it, the ultimate question for the board is whether this change will make this building substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. I hope the answer to that is a pretty easy no. I'll also note that all the abutters have weighed in, in support of the project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. There are about, I think there's six. So first one is from Judith Giorgio on seven sixteen twenty twenty-four. She's our health agent. She reviewed the plans to add a small addition and renovate the interior of the dwelling. The addition will not add septic, septic flow to this presumed three-bedroom dwelling. The health division has no record noting the location of the septic system. The site plan submitted shows a septic tank close to the proposed cantilevered addition. This is acceptable. The location of the septic component should be noted on a site plan and submitted for review. Next, we have a note from the Conservation Commission, received on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. The applicant submitted a notice of intent, which was heard by the commission on May twenty-two, twenty-four, and June twelve. The project was continued to August seventh, twenty twenty-four, to allow the applicant to apply to the ZBA for approval of the project. The project will be reviewed and conditioned to meet our standards. Next, we have a note received July two from Cynthia Bassett, and she owns the property at one forty-nine and one fifty-seventh Seagull Lane, which abut the property at forty-three Edgewater Drive. She has reviewed the plans and approved the proceedings as planned. Next, we have a note from Sarah and Charles Hemmerdinger, one forty-one Seagull Road in Chatham. We are fine with the improvements to the plan at forty-three Edgewater. Thanks for keeping us in the loop. And that was received, let's see, I don't know, maybe seven hours ago? That's what it says on it.
All of these were on the same day.
Yeah, okay, all on the same date. And next, on July ninth, we have a note from Susan B. Hamel. She owns the property at sixty-five Edgewater Drive in Chatham, and she's writing, "With respect to the proposed renovation at forty-three Edgewater Drive, she's reviewed the plans in the renovation and approved the proceeding as planned." Next is a note from, let's see.
Consuelo Loomis.
Consuelo, yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
This is the handwritten one. I know it's hard to read.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. She reviewed the plans, and this was received July one, twenty twenty-four, for the proposed renovation at forty-three Edgewater, and she approves it proceeding as planned. That's a different term than I've usually noted, but in any event, she's happy. And is there anybody on Microsoft Teams or here in the audience that wishes to speak against the application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Ginny?
I have no questions.
And we'll just go right down.
I have no questions.
No questions.
So as I understand it, you're not requesting a concrete pad for a generator?
That's correct, yes.
And you're not requesting gas service extension to power the generator from the existing service?
That's right.
Other than that, you are requesting the thirty-one-square-feet cantilevered addition and two air conditioning units elevated?
Yep. That's correct.
I have no other questions.
Dave Nixon?
Thank you. It's interesting when we get letters, as we did, from some relatives, Cynthia Bassett, perhaps related to it?
Cynthia Bassett might be my sister, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
I had to talk her into it.
Which is always good. It's always good. And I have to tell you, that was a fabulous presentation, and one of my other spies, I have several spies on my payroll, tell me in truth, you're a judge. Is that true?
I am retired. I'm fully retired. But I was a judge at one time, yes.
Okay, well, fabulous presentation. Thank you.
I have no questions.
And I just wanted to ask the building commissioner, do you have any comments about any of the changes with the gas or any of that?
No, I don't.
No? Okay, just, I don't know, just felt like asking that.
There's no buildable upland on the property, right? So they, they list percentages, but you can't do percentages of zero, so they're limited to twenty-eight hundred square feet, but the, they're far below the twenty-eight hundred square feet. So that's not an issue.
Okay, great, great. And I don't have any other questions. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Vich seconds and votes yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, deliberations. Dave Nixon?
Well, as stated, excellent presentation. Absolutely in no way is this possibly substantially more detrimental to than anyone.
And Dave Vich?
I agree. It meets all of our criteria and is not substantially more detrimental, and we'll support it.
Ginny?
I too was very impressed by your presentation, and also, I'm impressed that you can do all of this with only a thirty-one-square-foot ask, so very, that's impressive. Agree with my colleagues, not substantially more detrimental, meets our criteria.
And Steve?
I don't have any problems. It meets all of our criteria.
I agree, and I agree with Ginny. More power to you for figuring out how to do this with kind of reconfiguring the interior, essentially. So, good project.
And Paul?
I agree with my colleagues.
As do I. Any conditions needed? No, probably not.
I will, I'll move to approve the application as submitted, with the exception that a concrete pad for a generator would not be included, and the gas service extension to power the generator from existing service on Edgewater Drive would not be included.
Okay. Sarah might wanna add something or subtract something?
The generator that was proposed complied with all of the setback requirements, so they would not have needed our approval to install that in the first place.
Okay.
So by conditioning it, if he did ever decide to install one, then he would have to come back to have the condition lifted to be able to install the generator.
Maybe strike that portion?
Well, what we're, I guess what I'm saying is that we're approving the application, but without the concrete generator pad as a part of the application, which it seems to me is logical, given that he's not required to do that in any case. Is that not right?
No, I agree with you, Paul. Also, we don't know in the future time where they might wanna put it. You know, the chances are, maybe they'll go there, but so I think it would have to be looked at again. So we should keep, as you said.
Would it have to be looked at it again if it was gonna be in the exact same spot on the, on the plan?
It would be looked at by Conservation, but the board, the zoning board wouldn't look at either the concrete pad or the generator, as long as they conform to, well, as long as they conform to the setback requirements in the bylaw.
And, and we don't know today whether that would be true or not.
So, so I guess I would leave my motion as made?
Sure.
I agree.
Dave Vich?
I can go, yeah, I'll, I can go along with it.
You wanna not pick that battle in a second?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I kind of am thinking, why, do we really need to go there? But if, if members, enough members of the board feel it's important, I can go.
Why don't we take a vote on it if we need to go there? Because that's what we do, right? You think we need to go there?
No, I don't.
Okay, do you?
No.
You don't, you actually don't think we need to go there?
No, I think we should keep it the way it is, the way Paul.
Okay, and you disagree, correct?
I don't think we need the condition.
And you do think we need to, okay. Ginny, do we need to condition it? Yay or nay?
Did the application say it was about approving a generator?
It did not, because it was not part of, it didn't need relief from the Board of Appeals.
So it just was on there?
It was, he showed the full plan of...
It's the total plan. Then I, I don't think we need to condition it.
All right, and Steve, what do you think? Don't worry, we'll still like you.
I would leave it in there, because you never know what the future's gonna be. Who knows if it's gonna be in the same spot or not? Or if it's gonna get approved by Conservation. So I would leave it in there.
All right, must be...
I don't think we need it.
I don't think we need it either, so let's take them out.
Just, yeah, just to further stay, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, if it was not required as part of this application...
I'm a big fan of staying in our lane.
Yeah, I would prefer to stay in our lane. And you know, we don't know what the future, but if a future proposal came along that required our review, it would come to us. Absent that, if we, I think what Sarah's saying, if we put this condition on, it's gonna come to us under any circumstances in the future. I don't think we need to do that, honestly.
All right, so...
Let me, let me just see if, I understand where everybody is at. I, I move to approve the application as submitted, without the provision for a concrete pad or generator or a gas service extension. So that would mean those conditions would not be on there.
Three of us, three of us that are voting are saying, don't put those on there, because they didn't ask us for that.
Okay, well, I think we're all voting that way, aren't we?
I hope so.
Well...
I'm voting, I'm voting to support exactly what you just said.
And three of us are not.
Three are saying no.
The three of you are, the three of you are saying that there should be no conditions. I'm not opposing conditions, other than the application that's been submitted. All I'm saying is that there should not be a concrete pad for a generator or gas service extension.
But we're not asking you to say that.
Okay, well, I thought that was part of the application.
It wasn't part of the application.
All right.
Sarah, don't take it from me.
Is Sarah not clear on it? Because she's writing up the draft.
It was written in the transmittal letter that the applicant submitted, because he detailed all of the work that was being done. However, the concrete pad is basically a patio, doesn't need relief from the Board of Appeals. The generator was totally conforming and did not need relief from the Board of Appeals, so it would not be part of the decision to begin with, because it does not need your approval. They can do it, where it's located can be done as of right.
I, I thought what I was saying made that clear. In other words, I thought what I was saying said, we're not saying anything with respect to a concrete pad for a generator or a gas service extension. They would need to come back for whatever approvals were necessary at that time under the application, a new application, if it's necessary. Otherwise, there would be no new application.
So I think the, the applicant was an overachiever.
Well, so I, I, I'm impressed that I was able to generate controversy with this, with this application. It was not my intention. I, it doesn't make any difference to me what you all decide. I, legally, I think Chair is right that, since I'm not asking for approval for this, you don't need to pose it as a kitchen. On the other hand, if the majority wants to impose it as a condition, we're not doing it anyway. Maybe my kids will down the road.
And I like nothing better than a judge agreeing with me. As a criminal defense attorney, it doesn't happen much. So I appreciate that. And I'm gonna take that and run and still stick with my, my decision. Three of us voting say, just don't mention it. So can we do that?
All right. Well, then I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Yes, sir.
Any decision we make has to be a supermajority.
It does. Oh, any, okay, so you don't have it on that?
No.
No. So if you...
No.
I will second the, the motion that was just made.
Yeah, and how do you vote?
And I would vote yes.
What are you gonna do?
Yes.
There you go. Ginny?
Yes.
Paul?
Well, I started this whole problem, didn't I?
I'll vote yes.
And I vote yes as well. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, and I apologize for that problem.
Thank you for your last portion of the input. It helped.
And if you can figure out what we just voted on, let us, let us know, will you? Oh, my God. Gee.
Yeah, right, right. It was helpful that you said that, yeah.
Oh, man.
Judge Litchfield.
He could have. He could have. He acted in hardly had to.
He is, he's a moderator, he is.
I know. Yes, yes. The application will be... Well, that's right. One time, yeah. You're a moderator. 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 You're a moderator.
All right, so whenever Sarah's ready, we're going to hear 24 Pine Ridge Road, which is application 24-076, Attorney William Litchfield for Russell and Nancy Young.
Application number 24-076, E. Russell Young and Nancy S. Young, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 24 Pine Ridge Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 8C Block 23, Lot S41. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the partial demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 19 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, and it will be located 16.5 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District, where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,295 square feet, 11%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,762 square feet, 14.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and then it contains 11,858 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield, Attorney Litchfield, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield, members of the board, Bill Litchfield, here on behalf of Russell and Nancy Young. Russell is here with us virtually, and our architect, Angelo Carrickattis, as well. We had wanted to get you out of here by 4 o'clock, at maybe 4:05, but this is a fairly, we think, reasonable and simple proposal to give the family, the Young family, a little bit more room for their family. They've owned the house for the last dozen years, and by next September, they hope it will be their primary residence. When they have had family gatherings in the past and they're thinking about Thanksgiving and grandchildren, it just doesn't work. They need a larger dining room. The alternative for a house like this, as has happened with some houses in Harding's Beach Hills, is to go up, build a second story. They didn't want to do that. They instead proposed to build what we think is a modest addition and also some storage area in the rear of the lot, as shown there, where it says proposed addition right in the middle of the plan, a little bit to the, down there. There's already a building right now. There's already a structure. They're going to take that off and expand it, bring a small front porch on the south side, more or less, along the road, and then do a deck with basement storage below in the rear, and then further to the rear as well, there will be a proposed deck. But we think it's an appropriate proposal, and I will go directly into the criteria as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks. The site is typical for subdivision created in 1956. The site was adequate for the, is adequate for the existing home, notwithstanding the nonconformities. I think you could find it to be reasonable and appropriate for the expansion of the house with the additional basement storage necessary in lieu of a garage, and again, as I said, arguably preferable to a second story. As to compatibility of size, the neighborhood was developed under prior zoning. If you approve the special permit, it will remain compatible. The gross floor area is somewhat larger than some other houses in the neighborhood, because unlike most of them, which were built with crawl spaces, we actually have a basement. A basement actually has some living area in it as well, but many of the other original houses in that neighborhood have only, only have crawl spaces, so they have a smaller gross floor area. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, it's 2 and 1/2 feet toward the flood zone. But the flood zone in question, it's to the right there. If you look what's further to the right, there's another house. The flood zone is one that comes back from, from the marsh that you see going down Harding's Beach Road. And as you know, the flood maps have changed, the elevations are higher, and a number of years ago, we imposed a 50-foot limit rather than a 25-foot limit. But we're only going to be 2 and a feet, 2 and 1/2 feet closer to the flood zone, and it's the Conservation Commission, as I'll get to in a moment, has already approved it. So I think the extent of increase in nonconformity, given the zoning requirements when the house was built, which is really what we have to consider, the extent of increase is minimal. It's 2 and 1/2 feet in any event. As to suitability of site, again, it's been there, the house has been there for half a century or 60 years. The house itself is within the current Coastal Conservancy District setback, but it was reviewed favorably by the Conservation Commission on April 10. The chair will read a comment that says they made a negative finding, and negative finding is a good thing. It was approved under a request for determination of applicability, and they found the project to be acceptable. As to scale mass, citing views and vistas, mass is not really applicable to the existing one-story cottage, even though it has living area below. It's without views and vistas. The impact on the streetscape is shown in the bottom right on what's on the screen right now. That's what you'll see from the road, the rear, no one will really see anyway. But if you make, if you approve the special permit, there is no impact on mass. The scale is minimized by the design, which Angela was done, with a small, but we think you can find attractive change in the facade. And again, the majority of the addition is the rear. As to compatibility of use, there's no change. As to adequacy of water and sewer, we have a Title V for three bedrooms, been reviewed by the Board of Health. There is no change there either, no problems with traffic flow and safety or utilities. So as you are aware, the question is whether construction of an addition allowing for a dining room for family use and some additional storage areas down below in the rear, whether that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. The applicants and their architect devoted considerable thought to development of plans which maintained a single-story cottage feel rather than going up, but which provided some additional living space. It will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood where it's proposed, and also works best with the current interior configuration. So there are a number of reasons why this design is appropriate. Pardon me, most importantly, of course, is that it meets the criteria set forth in the bylaw. So given the plans and those criteria, I think that you can find that the addition with a very small further encroachment into the Coastal Conservancy setback, not the district itself, just the setback, but otherwise conforming, is not substantially more detrimental. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. I have three correspondences to read on 7/17/2024. Judith Giorgio tells us that she reviewed the plan to add a dining room addition to the property, and no changes to the septic system are required, and she has no concerns. We have a note on July 16 from the Conservation Commission that they issued a negative four determination, as noted, and that's that one. Next, we have a note from Janet Fields from 40 Pine Ridge Road. As a director butter, I fully support Nancy and Russell's renovation plans for 24 Pine Ridge Road. The changes to the southern elevation of the house will provide them with the space they need while adding a charming feel to the house and enhancing its overall appearance. I hope you will act favorably on this application, and that was received on July 22, 2024. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that has a question or wishes to speak against the application? Seeing none. Questions from the board. Dave Nixon?
None, thank you.
Dave Veach?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
Steve, just keep going down?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Nor do I. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, deliberations. Steve, you looking at me?
Well, I think this is probably a good project. The one thing that I would have preferred to have seen were complete elevation drawings. All the, all the drawings, I know it's not you, but all the drawings are partial, so it's hard to get a sense of what the entire picture is going to look like. Other than that, I think it's, it's probably a good project. And it's, you know, doing some updates to the house that are probably needed by the family, so it's, it's a good project. But I would have preferred to see better drawings.
Paul, what do you say?
I agree. I think it's a fine project. I think it clearly meets our criteria. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would vote in favor.
And Dave Nixon?
This is, has to be one of the strangest lots I've ever seen, particularly where the house is sitting, sit, and how it comes off the road and all that. But that's got nothing to do with the question. Is it substantially more detrimental than neighborhood? Absolutely not.
And Dave Veach?
Yeah, I, I agree with Steve. I, you know, I went through the package of drawings. Well, first thing I did was separate the packet and take out the stuff I didn't need to carry with me everywhere. But I, and I noted the page of, of partial drawings, which, and even then, I had to use some of my imagination to, to picture it. So, but I don't see that as, that's for future reference. And it meets all of our criteria, and it's not substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood.
Okay, Ginny?
I appreciate the renovation. I think it's a nice project, and not substantially more detrimental meets our criteria.
And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues, and I think that new duck is going to be great.
Yeah, and it's always great to get to that, that full elevation whenever we can. So it's good that it came up in a, in a house where it's not that important compared to some others. So I, I'm in favor. And any conditions that you'd like to see or not see?
Neighborhood is tight. I would expect the board would use its, its, it's primarily a seasonal neighborhood, although when the Youngs move in, it'll be less so. But we expect that.
Yep.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted, with the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles will be contained on site or at a neighboring property. With permission of the property owner, that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Nixon?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes?
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds, votes yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yes.
Yes. And I vote yes as well. And what time is it?
4:09 PM.